They came out the whole board.
On AI, what we know about AI.
I didn't have a good.
Yeah, you didn't. You need your hammer?
I don't need a hammer.
We're good?
If I had a hammer.
Okay, here we go. Oh, I forgot my phone in my house. Okay, are we all set in the other room? They're all set?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so here we are already at the September Instructional Committee meeting. It is Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. And we've got some really interesting things on our agenda this evening. And we're going to start with an AI demonstration by Communications Director Terry Wolf. So Terry, I'll turn it over to you. Oh, I should do a quick attendance while you're connecting, if that's okay. Here, tonight, we have Board Member Sarah Sadowski, myself, Brenda Hastings. We're going to bump Barb Higgins on to the Instructional Committee for tonight, because we have a couple of votes we need to take. And I believe is, I haven't heard from Sarah.
Jess said she's on her way.
She's on her way, yes, so.
She's let everything a little bit.
Yeah, so that's great. So we'll have, we'll have a quorum, we just don't have one yet. So we'll start with the AI presentation. Thank you.
Okay, great. So this is just, I'm going to do a kind of just a quick introduction on what AI is to level set, because I'm not sure everybody's experience. And then even if you all are AI experts, I mean, I'm trying to give some grace here.
Yes, I appreciate that.
I'm anticipating that maybe some people who might be watching from home are not familiar. And, you know, I mean, this is something that's just going to be huge, and it's coming. I did want to give you a little bit of background about me being involved in this. Prior to my being a Director of Communication, I helped found CS4NH, which was Computer Science for New Hampshire, which was affiliated with code.org, Computer Science for All. I was, and I will admit this, passed the data privacy law that we have. That is the bane of many people's existence here, but also protects kids and really set a trend in the country, which I had no idea at the time. And I've been to the White House twice under two different administrations for STEM. So I am the Chair of the AI Implementation Team. And we have, Tim is on it, Kim and, Tim and I work closely, Kylene is on it. We have IT people, digital learning specialists, just a broad spectrum of people that are working on this for the last eighteen months.
Fantastic.
But, so, I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of where this is, what AI is like. So what we're looking at here is the adoption of ChatGPT compared to other things that we're all familiar with. And I'd say the biggest one is Netflix. It took ten years to get to a hundred million users. It took LinkedIn seven years, Facebook four and a half years, and ChatGPT point two of a year to get to a hundred million users. Eek. Yeah. So, and so I've tried to find where we, and that data is from the spring. Estimates are seven hundred million weekly users for ChatGPT. Now, that is coming from ChatGPT, so of course they're going to maybe possibly inflate, you know, what they're doing a little bit, but it's here. And I think that the idea of us hiding from it isn't really an option. This is just, again, some context, how long it took to meet, reach a million users. The Model T took twenty-five hundred days, ChatGPT took five. So when a lot of the stuff we're talking about is preparing kids, right? Preparing for where they need to be. These are the, one of the reasons I gave you the handout is hopefully so you can read this. This is from the Future Job Report with the World Economic Forum. The fastest-growing jobs are all tech-based. And the fastest declining jobs are postal service, anybody that is more of a clerical thing. They anticipate those jobs declining quite rapidly. And then the fastest-growing skills, again, the top three are AI, big data, network cybersecurity. But then what gets really interesting next is the creativity, resilience, curiosity, leadership. Do any of those things sound familiar?
Yep.
Profile of a learner.
Yeah, isn't it? Like, when you really look at that, it's like so cool. And I want to say, like, how awesome that this was designed, you know, the profile of a learner. Like, it really aligns really neatly of these skills are going to make what people, I think, stand out in a world of artificial intelligence, of like your humanity moving forward. So, so I'm going to show a couple of examples, and hopefully all the tech cooperates with me.
You know, I really thought this was like a joke, like somebody was like putting something else on their face, and it wasn't a legitimate filter, but like, this is legitimately a filter. Like, look, you can't, why are these getting like this? No wonder everyone feels so ugly all the time. Like, this is hard to tell that it's a filter. They should be illegal. We have got to stop this, for real. Just for reference, this is me without the filter. So, yeah. Let's, uh, let's ban filters.
Better without the filter, quite frankly.
I know, but it was a little shocking.
Yes, yeah.
There's an ad that showed Photoshop, and it's a woman lying on her stomach with her knees bent. It was like a billboard ad. And it showed lengthening her legs and lengthening her, like, the difference between the beautiful woman lying there to add, sell dove soap or something, and what they turned her into was scary.
Okay. So then next, this is, um, another example.
Hey, Terry, hope your afternoon's going all right.
I'm doing good, Maya. I am in a meeting with our Instructional Committee that I mentioned to you earlier. And we're talking about AI in schools. And I was wondering if you had any words of wisdom for them.
Ah, gotcha. Well, honestly, I think the biggest thing is remembering that AI, even me, is a tool, not a replacement for teachers. It's about augmenting what they do, freeing them up to focus on the stuff that really needs a human touch, you know? Like, actually connecting with students. What are they leaning into specifically?
Do any of you have questions for Maya, or was that a pretty good introduction for now?
You as in, do they have questions?
Yeah, I, I was asking the team. I think, I think they're pretty good right now, but it was, um, it was good to talk to you.
Cool, cool. Glad I could be present, I guess. It's kind of weird being the topic of discussion, not going to lie. What's the vibe in the room? Are they leaning toward excitement or mostly skepticism?
I'd say shock might be a good word right now. Yeah. So, okay, thanks, Maya, I'm going to hang up.
Oh, all right, have a good one.
So that's not real? That's no person?
No.
That's like Siri with the filter.
That's like totally smooth, right? Like, totally just, and so you can go, I've done this, you can put ChatGPT on your phone and do the voice interaction, and it's, it's, yeah, so that's why we're talking today.
And it's just so wild, because she uses positive, she uses like.
Lingo.
All of the little.
Actually, she'll, and she laughed, too. And she brought up, when I said we were in Concord, New Hampshire, she brought up cider donuts and fall foliage.
Foliage.
Oh, my god.
Yeah, it was really, it was really impressive and scary.
So high school and middle school teachers interacted with Maya at the opening day PD.
So what, I'm just curious. You're a high school or a middle school administrator, and you have somebody who's out sick, and you call home to find out, the parents know their child is homesick today, and you get Maya. What happened? I, I mean, there's not going to be a way for us to be able to, to tell who we're talking to.
I think a good, good thing, there is multiple points of communication at home. Like, we send out the emails, we, we do letter homes after a series of days, and the phone call that you're talking about. I, I think, I mean, you bring up a valid concern. I do think that the benefit is we do multiple ways of communicating, it's not just one.
The movie Wall-E comes to mind.
I know. Um, and so one of the other things, I don't know if you have heard of AI companions, but basically, take Maya, right? And people talk, people talk to Maya, you know, as a friend. It's become a concern. Adults a little bit more have, hopefully, critical thinking skills and some of their own agency. But when we're talking about kids doing this, it's a, it is a real concern. There's some legislation that they're looking at, putting some protections. But like, they know Meta, who is, you know, the owners of Facebook, knew that kids were being groomed with some of this, and they did nothing to stop it. So there is legislation what we're going to see, but I just, you know, wanted to share that with you. So these are all the things that we kind of need to think about a little bit, is we, you know, it's, this hits multiple areas. This isn't just kids writing an essay with AI. It's multiple things. But then I wanted to show you a ChatGPT example. So because ChatGPT is really the most of what we're really taught, you know, the common thing. And so my prompt is going to be, you are an elementary school principal. It is the end of the school year, and everyone's favorite bus driver is retiring after thirty years of service. Plan a retirement celebration for Brenda Brady that includes staff, students, and families. Brenda is a fan of the New England Patriots, and she plans to spend a lot of time with her grandchildren when she retires. Now, I'm showing you this in a Word doc because I liked the answer so much. I didn't want to have to redo it, because I'll get a different answer. So they're going to, the event's going to be called Brenda's Victory Lap, a celebration of thirty years in the high school gym. And then activities are to like make a book of memories for her. Thank you, bus driver signs, bus decorating contest. And a welcome from the principal. They're going to bring Brenda in on a bus and let her take a victory lap around the building. You know, so these are all ideas that just literally thirty seconds of typing this in. Now, let's say we agree with this, and then it's going to rain, or it's going to be too cold. You just type redo it. It just changes things really, really quickly.
And executive functioning disappears.
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it could, right? And so, um.
Although I would have liked this when I was like setting up the homecoming dance all those years. That would have been nice.
Well, and a lot of the things, a lot of the conversation is, it's great for something that you're not good at, especially adults, right? Let's say you're struggling writer, or you're struggling with science, or you're not good at something. Fixing your bike, you know, something's broken. Actually, one of our admin assistants, she did a presentation for all the admin assistants. She called, uses it for help instead of calling IT every time first. Imagine how much that could help our IT department if we could cut, you know, reaching out to them by ten, twenty percent, that would be really great. So there are so many buckets, and I'm really trying to kind of speedrun this presentation, because I know you have so much else. But so what it means for us, or where we're going with it right now, is we have a lot of different areas that we need to work on. First is supporting our administrators, you know, having them make sure they understand what AI is, potential impacts, like those AI companions, the idea that a student could call in and fake their parents. How, we need to prepare for that and learn about those types of things. AI literacy for everyone, that is a huge, huge priority. I think not only is it for students and our teachers, but probably even we need to do a little AI literacy for our families if they want to. You know, we need, this needs to be a little bit of a partnership, so they understand why we're putting policies into place. Training, actual PD, we're going to have some policy development, like a general AI policy. We've been looking at the acceptable use policy, but also we've been talking about a deep fake policy. You know, deep fakes are, we just need to be really clear that deep fakes are not okay, that they're going to violate, you know, kind of our Terms of Service that we're doing. And then identify some tools also, but we can't, it's interesting. One group has recommended that you say only certain tools are allowed and banning others. We will never be able to keep up with banning tools. You know, so we're really going to have to talk about appropriate use and good training.
Code of Conduct.
Exactly, exactly.
And suggested tools, you know, like.
Right. But it, unfortunately, not one tool fits everything. You use different tools for different things. This is a slide that our presenter that we did on our PD gave us. And we, I think it really connected with a lot of people, that there's different kinds of AI readiness for people, and like, our kids are going to need to have that working knowledge, knowing how to swim, that higher level of, you know, being more deeply immersed. And then we already kind of can picture the kids, who are going to be those deep dive really into data analysis and all the algorithms and all the, the science behind that. So we're going to have to think about these different things. In our district, we already have AI tools available through our single sign-on for staff. And so that's Microsoft Copilot is built in, and kind of a, a quality car, but not the fancy version. And then Canva, people love Canva AI. And so that is also something available that we have for free. And then we've allowed staff to use ChatGPT, Claude, basically whichever ones they want, as long as no student data, and they follow the Code of Conduct, you know, and everything. But it's to get them to experiment on it and to learn and learn how to use it. And then our immediate next steps is we are working on, oops, I spelled principals wrong, sorry. Guiding principals, maybe we'll guide principals and do principals. We'll do principals and principals.
I'm all in.
Yes, we'll do principals and principals. PD, we're going to be looking at PD all year long. We need to start meeting with families. That's highly encouraged to have families in on the conversation. And it's going to look different between, based on our grade span level, and then that AI literacy. So that's, that's what I have for you today. I thought I, I might invite myself back again in the future, and we'll do that, we'll do, have that conversation in stages, you know, as we go through this. And then I also put in the packet I gave you some of the most common ones, if you would like to experiment on your own, which I would highly encourage. And I'm happy to answer questions.
It seems as though we'll probably going to need some new instruction for students and staff, obviously, on this. Have we started looking? Are, are there schools already out there offering classes, you know, how to, how to use this in a safe way for students?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of, everybody's taking a little bit of a different approach. I think the one thing that I haven't mentioned at all is we've really talked about making sure the learning stays human-centered, you know, instead of becoming about, ooh, let's take an AI class. We did do a pilot in the spring, which Kylene led with four teachers, and we're going to start that back up. And that's a really good, we learned a lot of good information from that, that we had informed consent. Well, we let parents know, you know, and some parents did reach out with some concerns, and we just talked them through it. So we'll continue to do that, you know, but we're just, I think that it's hard, this catching up on this AI literacy, especially with all the other things that we're trying to work on. But this is just something that we have, we have to do it.
Any questions?
A million, but.
I know. Are we doing anything currently to try to drive home the idea that this tool could have some benefits, but you all have to be careful with it, to students? Are we, are we in any way already trying to, to lay that groundwork, but, you know, proceed cautiously? But we know you're going to proceed.
We, we spent our first day devoted to AI with the middle and high school teachers, and then had them play with it for the second half of it. And it will be an ongoing conversation that we're having. We're not having students on it at all. Teachers can demonstrate using it in the classroom. But at this point, we're, we're taking it cautiously, slowly, but also not lagging or dragging our.
Yeah, because we can say that we don't encourage the kids to use it, but we know they're using.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say, they're laughing at us.
That's the guiding, that's the guiding principles document, that we want to give a little bit more of a framework, you know, for teachers, when they, how to respond, they, they know a student has done it. And there's all sorts of philosophies on being super restrictive, or AI, you know, AI for everything. And, you know, we're preliminarily talking about a middle-of-the-road, but kids need to say, we need to let them know it's okay to use it for here, but we're also going to have to change the way we teach.
Yeah.
Really are, and that's going to be, that's going to be a challenge.
And I, I think it's going to be crucial that we, we hammer home for these kids that it can be both beneficial and dangerous. So travel carefully on this. You know, don't be afraid to use it, but don't, be, just be careful.
Yeah.
Like anything, their, their world is a different world than we certainly grew up in, and I think we'd be remiss to not acknowledge that. That would be my only, I'd say, start, start telling them early. Sure, you can, we know you're going to do this, just be careful.
Yeah. All right, so we have a hard stop of six o'clock, and we need the high school to have at least twenty minutes for their course presentation. So do you want to do the calendars? And then I'll just sort of tap it like, I'm like, okay, because we really want to make sure we have at least twenty minutes.
I'll be expeditious.
In your packets, remember, you have the calendars.
Three of these versions you've seen before. We distributed them to CEA, and they did have, their beginning-of-the-year meeting was able to get us feedback. Immediate feedback version two was not well-received. It starts earlier than we have in the past. So version two was not well-received by CEA. Then we have version one and version three, that very similar, except for version three takes into some feedback that we received the last couple of times that we've done this, that the small weeks leading up to the break in December, where we have, where we're in school for two days, or we're coming back, where Friday's January second was the situation would have been, I believe it was last year or a couple of years ago. The, the feedback is it's, a number of students are already not going to attend school. With the twenty-first, twenty-second, many families are likely preparing to leave for break, taking advantage of the leaving early, and we, we tend to have a high number of student absences then. So with that feedback, and where we did, I believe it was last year, where we, we just took the, the second, and made it, extended the break the second week, instead of taking a small week, version three has us two full weeks at that December break. That was the version that had the best response from the CEA. They, they shared that they appreciated the feedback was taken into consideration around that the holiday break, and that those short one-to-two-day weeks really are not, a lot is accomplished during those days. Understands that it pushes us out a little bit later in June, but it still keeps us within a reasonable ballpark. They did ask, what would a fourth version look like? And I share this with you, just full transparency, that this was a, a conversation they had with their association members, if they were to start on the thirty-first. There were some big drawbacks to that, pushes graduation back to the nineteenth of June. And you can see the built-in snow days on version four would bring us right up to the end of, end of June. If we, our school year would end on June thirtieth. So if we potentially use more than those days, we would lose those days of instruction. So this is not a version that I would recommend. The version that I would recommend would be version three.
That looks, version three looks good. I mean, it looks very consistent with what we've done in years past. It's always good when we can be on agreeable footing with the.
And so committee members, we're going to vote this evening to recommend one of these calendars to the full board for adoption. Tim, you briefly had mentioned that there is a bill currently in process that would make it so that we can't start before?
It, it's in discussions. We, we don't know where it will, when it will come about at some point in time, but there has been discussions whether or not it will be signed into law that New Hampshire schools don't start until after Labor Day.
And would that be in effect for this coming school year?
At this time, I don't have that level of detail.
Do we have a backup plan, that if we were to vote for one of these, it has us starting a little bit before? That, how we would make those days?
So I don't have a mock calendar put together, but in discussion with districts who already start after the Labor Day weekend, they shared with me the flow, the holidays, such as Columbus Indigenous People, or the President's Day, and other singletons that we, we traditionally have had in the district. They don't celebrate those or get the day off. In return, it gets them about a week back in time towards the end of June. And then they do come to school, instead of having two full weeks around the December break, they would choose to come to school for those two days, because again, although they may not be the richest equality of instructional days, it still takes off of that back and pushing them right to the end of June. On average, though, they're still getting out into late teens to early twenties as a date in June, you know, pending, barring any significant snow days.
And when you think of late June school days versus two days at the end of Christmas break, school days, we're talking the same thing. There are days that they're either packed in or they're not quite there yet, but attendance is is wishy washy and yeah, so it's not like we're losing good days for bad days.
That's, that's correct, yeah.
Any other comments, thoughts?
I will move to present version three to the broader um board um for approval for twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven.
I will second that. Is there any discussion?
Nope.
I am concerned about the governor continuing to push for start after Labor Day. I think it's got a lot of political momentum and there's no telling when they would make that legislation live.
Well, the beauty of this is that if that were to happen before this would be implemented, we remade.
Right, and we would know by mid, you know, by crossover probably.
You know what the beauty, to Barb's point, the beauty is the reason we're trying to get this done right now is because of our sending schools, right? They, so they can set their, their calendars. If the governor does do that, guess what? We all have the same start date or roughly the same start date. So they're going to have to change regardless. So it's, it's something that I'm we're all in the same boat. We don't have the details. So uh we do have, luckily, we do have schools who already do this and they're sharing out amongst our, you know, uh different groups uh of superintendent stakeholders, how they're, you know, how they're doing this and how they make it work for their calendars.
Thank you. All right, um, all of those in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The calendar version three will pass to be recommended to the full board in October.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm going to take off here ready.
Absolutely, we understand. Thank you. And next we will move on to um, is this the course proposal? Or the framework?
Uh, course proposals.
Okay. So we'll go, so Kylene and high school teachers, come on up. Love hearing from you guys.
Present yourselves.
Yeah. They always have the best presentations, it's so good.
I found these reading glasses that actually work. It's amazing what I'm not seeing.
All right, we're, we'll get started. So thank you. I'm Kylene Chalaskis, one of the assistant principals.
I'm Nicole Barnett, the um curriculum and instruction facilitator for math and business.
And so we've got four course proposals for you tonight. Three are for math and one is for English. Um, we're a little earlier this year, um, those of you who have been on this committee before in that um putting together our program of studies is a big Herculean effort. And we've recognized that we need a little more time because there's many steps after meeting with you um that include full board approval and then um scheduling and then requests and all sorts of things. So we're trying to move the process up a little bit.
Let's get Mia to help us with the scheduling.
That is correct, and, and that's true, that is true of why we're, we're doing some of this. Um, I will tell you that all of the requests that we come to you for new courses come from looking at our data at the high school, come from changes in who the students are sitting in front of us, what they need. Things like AI, need for more problem solving, all those kinds of things. Um, tonight, we have three math electives for a couple of major reasons that I think just worth sharing with you. Next year's graduating class, the class of twenty twenty seven, is the first graduating class that needs four full math credits. This is the increase to twenty two and a half credits to graduate that we approved several years ago. So this is the first group that needs the four full math credits. The other thing we've recognized is that in comparison with our other core subject areas, the math department has way fewer electives already. So I did a quick count today and the English department at Concord High has seventeen electives. The science department has twenty electives, which I still say rivals most high schools in the state with a number of science electives. Our social studies department has fourteen electives and math has eleven right now. So just even without the increase in credit requirements, we know that the math department could really use some more electives. And to increase the number of credits and not increase the number of electives, it's time. A couple of these we actually had ready for last year, but we held off because there were some other things. The last thing I'll share is we're focused on math and English this year. Um, there were other department course proposals we looked at as a facilitator team with Chris and with our other facilitators. We put those on hold for this year because the other big piece for our curriculum facilitators is reviewing the new minimum standards for the DOE. And that's a big undertaking that's going to have some other things we have to look at across the school um and across our different departments. So I don't want you to think our other departments didn't have some great ideas, but we had to make some decisions and put some things on hold and focus on this. So I'm going to let her start and I'm going to pass out some of the proposals so you can look at them in more detail.
So we have three new math proposals. The first one is math around the world. Which is sort of like a history of math class. It is a globally focused math course that highlights how core math ideas such as nu- number systems, algebra, geometry, probability and data analysis developed across different cultures and continue to solve real world problems. Students will engage in mathematical contributions from regions such as Mesopotamia, Egypt, India, China and the Islamic world, while also applying ideas to modern contexts, including finance, architecture, navigation, technology. Um, and by analyzing patterns, solving authentic problems and comparing mathematical strategies across cultures, students will deepen their computational and reasoning skills while gaining an appreciation for math as both a universal language and culturally, culturally diverse discipline. So that's the math around the world.
I would say, we'll give you a minute to just look that math around. Yep, the math around the world, if you think um those of us who might have been more humanities minded in college, think about perhaps a, a different lens in the math world. And so this is looking at that lens with a math focus.
And I did use AI to come up with the student version for the handbook. We got a catchy little thing there.
Well, Katie Heron does say that math is the same in all languages. It's why she's good at it, so cultural reference. This is fantastic.
I'm going to take all your classes every time I get them.
I want to go back to high school every time. Well, some ways.
It's not easy.
So we're thinking this course would be offered to um students in grades nine through twelve, so no prerequisite skills needed. We are still aligning with the district's K through twelve math competencies of algebraic thinking and representations. And essentially using history and different regions of the world to help students see where the math that we do every day in our courses and in our lives is coming from. Big things like where was zero first discovered at two different places at roughly around the same time? When there's no social media, so that's pretty cool. Um, also looking at things like pyramids and I'm going to get my notes here. There's something called a ziggurat, which is like a pyramid, but that's the step ones. So also three different types of pyramidish figures in different parts of the world, all roughly at the same time with no social media interaction. So just thinking, how does this happen? When does it, look at the timeline of events um going from the abacus to calculator base and how did the number system transfer into Europe and really grab hold for the world we live in is kind of neat.
Fascinating.
Why did the Roman number system fall off the wayside?
I had a teammate years ago when I ran for Nike who is, has like a doctorate in math. I don't know, I know math is big. And she always said that, that that people that thought mathatic, mathematically, it was no different than thinking in Portuguese or thinking in French or thinking color, like she looked at it as like another language, which this sort of alludes to.
I think with our diversity of our school too.
Right.
I mean, bringing in math from all over the world is just fantastic for students to be able to see themselves and their, their cultures in, in the math, so.
Semester course?
Semester course, yes.
And a half credit, right?
Yep, half credit.
Good fun. All right, go on to the next one.
Yes.
All right, next one, SAT math preparation.
Just as fun, don't worry.
Just as fun.
For those detail oriented, test minded people.
Or, or for folks who have test anxiety and need practice with it. What are the tools? What does the toolbox look like? Collaborate on questions that you might be afraid of. And how do you work past those and mindset? All the test skills mindset, I think is going to be huge in this course. We have it designed for grades ten, I'm all over the place here. Ten and eleven, sort of based on when they take the PSATs and the timeframe that would make the most sense. So our eleventh graders would be taking it in their, either their in their fall semester so that the course has been completed before they take the SATs. And we could use their tenth grade and then once available, their current uh eleventh grade PSAT results to help guide the instruction.
Oh, yeah.
To, yeah. To make it really geared towards the students and what they need. But I also want to make sure you know this isn't just a computer class where they're all sitting there practicing PSATs. It's collaborating, still going up to the boards and all the building thinking math strategies that we've been implementing.
So is this, um, it's a semester course?
Yep.
Grade eleven, we do it in the fall?
Yep, and grade ten would be the year prior, yeah, spring.
Spring of the year or after, either.
Before they take the SAT, so.
Yes, yes, okay.
So if you don't take it as sophomore, you'd take it your junior year, if interested. Um, we find that there are families asking for SAT prep all the time. We have students interested in it who are specialized all the way up through AP Calc. They want the broad range. Um, all students can shift on their curve to do better.
If a student did really poorly on the math portion of the SAT as junior, they, they could take it and then retake the SAT, right? So you could have seniors that tanked and like want to do better, okay.
And so we wouldn't close it to anybody, it's just.
No, that's a lot, there's a logical timeframe for it, but I can also see where somebody's like, what the heck happened to me and it would be a.
I'm seeing a point ten.
Oh, I wasn't sure, a semester, the start off small and see what the interests look like. I do think it would be.
Do you have staff that could pick this up?
Yes, and yeah, people are willing and ready to teach this course.
So they have the ability in their schedules to pick up a, another course?
It's always going to be based off of course request, right? And we're going to then have to come and say, we can run this many sections with this number of FTEs, full time equivalencies. We're, we're certain for the most part, we could run this with what we have. Um, and I, you know, have a few numbers related to that too, um, because I do know with the increase in credits, you know, the question is like, how many students currently take four math classes versus who don't? And so I looked last year, we, I have an Excel sheet that goes back about five years and I'm trying to track students in Concord High School and their math programming to see what they take and when they take it and how do they do? And so out of the seniors who graduated last year, two thirds already take four math credits. So you're not talking about an inordinate number of students who need more. You're talking about another hundred students or so that we need to make sure that they have courses for. So I predict we're going to be able to manage that. However, it is a requirement that next year they have four math credits, so we are going to have to.
And three of the four are Algebra One, Algebra Two and Geometry, right?
In theory, you don't need geometry to graduate from Concord High School. You could take out, the only m- math requirement as far as the course is algebraic concepts is algebra. So you can earn that through taking Algebra One or Algebra Two. That's how you earn your algebra.
Colleges do like the three.
Well, yeah, yeah.
But as far as graduating from Concord High School, you need four.
How long has that been the case? For a long time or? Don't tell anyone.
We don't, no, we have more students taking more math every year, so we're on the right track.
Well, and when you look at the list of jobs that are going to get bigger and bigger, anything to do with technology and computers is math based to the hilt and language math based.
And transitioning, so that's the SAT prep. Any other questions about the?
And those are both semester classes, so they could, about each other?
So all three math classes are point three FTE?
No, 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 I would not consider it that way.
Okay.
I would not.
So you're not looking to hire anyone to come in? You're just going to try to spread it across the people who are already there?
Yep.
Okay, and if that changes, you'd let us know?
And if that changes, when we show you FTEs in the spring and we say, all right, these are the these kids need a math credit, so we have to make sure they have it, we'll come to you with that.
Okay.
But I don't think it's going to be significant.
Okay, and then enrollment numbers could indicate, okay, we don't need two sections of this math class, so we'll get rid of the spring one and we'll put this in.
That is exactly right, right, that is exactly right.
Did you want us to do the math ones or do all four together?
That's up to you folks.
Why don't we do all four together just so we can keep it?
Sure. So then the last math, um, in talking about sort of now more students are taking more math. Um, I'll let Nicole share the last math elective.
So our last math elective to present is AP Calculus BC. This is the last AP um math course in the college board level.
The highest?
The highest, yep. Um, we would, this would allow us to be maxing out. We would have all of them uh for our school from the college board. This also aligns with NHTI's Early College and is a Calc II college, full year. We, I'm not requiring that students take AP Calc AB, but they, because we have a non AP Calculus class as well, so they could take calculus and then jump into AB if they would like the Calc II designation on their transcript, so that's available as well. Um, we have currently in two years, looking at at least twenty one students who would be eligible to take um the AP Calc BC, so a full course, already ready to go in two years. And then uh three years from now, it dips down a little bit to twelve students. It's hard to see the progression because we don't quite know what they're going to double up in or not. Thank you. And um also last year, we did a little switch in programming, so there was more kids who doubled up in geometry and Algebra Two to, to get that elevation happening, but putting it in the program of studies is going to be helpful to grow the program some more.
Is this something that you might flip flop? Like I know sometimes an AP class isn't offered every year. Sometimes there's a year where it isn't offered. Does that still happen or is scheduling better? Like I know there was AP American, AP European. And so they'd look and see what, what was going to be offered, what, and that's how they'd set their schedule?
Offer both. We, we would have to offer both.
Yeah.
I would see it a little bit more similar to the way sometimes we run AP Physics One and AP Physics Two.
Okay.
Sometimes depending on the numbers, we run them as separate sections. And sometimes our AP Physics teacher has them together, which is not ideal, but it is helpful for the students who have exhausted the rest of that physics program.
Right, and what do they do now?
Similar about Calc BC.
Yep.
Is that we do have students who we sit down with every spring and they have exhausted our math program. And we have to help them to figure out, is there something running over at NHTI? Is there something online? This would allow us to at least have in the program of studies and have a teacher prepared that when we have this group of students who are talented math students, I mean, these, these are talented math students um who have really moved their way through the program. We want to be able to say that we have this course ready for you. So I would say it more as the physics where every once in a while, we might have to run it together, but.
Depending on, again, enrollments.
Depending on enrollment.
Exactly, that's a good way to look at it.
This year, we have two sections of AP Calculus running, so we're up, back up, we took a little dip.
So if this existed already, you could have one of each.
That is correct.
And then some of those students that are just in the regular AP Calc could be more challenged.
And do you have any thoughts about I, I'm, we added more um Algebra One to the middle school. Do you think that that will help push up the need for this?
Well, it helps to share with students the goal, right? And if you keep raising the goal and you let students who really love math, or maybe they don't love it, but they're really talented with it and love the complex problem solving, to let students know that we've just given you another option, especially if you consider doubling up here or you, we have some students who have been able to demonstrate that they may not need Algebra Two because they're talented math students. So sometimes they bump over a level and we're trying to account for that too. So to show and tell students that now we have this additional course, I think could motivate some really talented math students as well. That's the hope.
Great, and the only other question I, I guess I would have is, will this help us? We've heard over the last few years in instructional committee that sometimes when we have uh high school kids that go to college, they end up taking remedial math classes at first because they didn't have if, if they're going into a, a business or math related study field, that they aren't quite ready, so they take a remedial to. So they take a remedial to get them where they need to be for college, would this help prepare our students better?
I think that our overall goal in four years of math program is really what's helping that. It was only a short few years ago where we really had two years of math required and then a math class, but that math class could have happened even in other content areas, not within the math department. So we've come a long way at Concord High School in the last five to seven years in really pushing math core and in more years.
Yeah, lots of new classes.
So I would say that's been more of that, and that's just, it's just a, it's a, it's a process, you know? Um, and that, that, like I said, next year's seniors, twenty-twenty-seven, will be the first group we've ever expected four full years of math with. So even that right there is stressing the importance of it.
That's great, no, thank you.
So those are the three math.
Okay.
And then I have Matt Scobie and Nicole Murphy, who are going to come up. I'll sit one over to the left for the two of them to talk about the, I'll pass out the. This is what I like. Right, this is the good stuff. Thanks for being with us today, you guys, really nice to see you.
You too.
What? Pass them around, it's not terrible at this. Chip chop, let's go.
I'm sorry, Matt and.
I'm Matt Scobie, I'm the English teacher and the curriculum facilitator for the department.
I'm Nicole Murphy, I'm just a regular English teacher.
Just a regular teacher.
Just a regular teacher.
You're selling yourself short there, girl.
Yeah, that's very English teacher.
Yeah.
A marvelous.
We're just regular board members.
Subpar ones sometimes.
No, I'm always amazing, but.
Just ask, you'll tell you.
Yeah.
So, we, at Concord High School, students have to take four full years of English. We, they, every student has to take English nine, English ten, and then they get to choose their four electives. Um, currently, we only offer one AP course, and it is a literature-focused course. Um, so we, as a department, have been talking about this for many years, i- in terms of adding another AP course. Um, and Nicole Murphy really, uh, took charge of this and worked really hard on this course proposal and developing a curriculum for this course over the, over the last summer. So this AP Language and Composition is a writing-focused course. Um, and, and it is offered for ju-, it will, hopefully will be offered for juniors and seniors. Um, currently, our AP literature course is offered to seniors exclusively. So this would open up an, an AP option for students, um, their junior year. Do you want to share a little bit about?
Yeah, about it, um, okay, so essentially, like, you're all focused on nonfiction. Um, so it's in that way different from a lot of our other electives. Um, we don't actually have one that's like solely focused on analyzing rhetoric and nonfiction currently. Um, so this would provide that opportunity for students. Um, we do have, of course, nonfiction texts in courses, I don't want to give you the impression that we don't, but this would be exclusively focused on nonfiction, as well as then, how do we construct analytical arguments, you know, in the same style as what we're studying? Um, you know, so when thinking about what students are going to learn, um, they'll learn, first of all, what is rhetoric? Like, what are the techniques? And really do a deep dive into that and like how to break stuff down. Um, and speaking of the AI stuff we looked at earlier, like, this would be very topical in that sense. Um, as well as then, how do they construct their own argument, both like verbally in debate format as well as writing? Um, that would, just in a nutshell, is what they would learn.
Sounds awesome.
Does anyone have any questions? I know the, the proposal's intimidating, I blame college board.
It's not at all.
They have all the standards.
This is very detailed.
And that's why the high school proposals are always so easy to decide on, because you, you just do a great job with them.
I love that you're using outliers in Born a Crime too, like.
Yeah, the plan is to do like a book study, kind of towards the end of the course, um, and study a longer piece and like what are the techniques used there, how is that different than looking at an essay? Um, and then hopefully, like after the exam, you know, it's a little bit of a breather, like not quite as challenging as some of the rest of it.
Yeah.
Can you do anything on ethnography?
On which?
Ethnography?
Uh, no, but I'll have to add that.
Let me know. Yeah, anthropology.
So one thing I like about AP courses, um, sometimes people's initial response is, okay, we're just giving more classes to the smart kids who already have an easy time in school, which of course is not true at all. But that is a common, you know, we, you know, make sure everyone can learn, have lots of classes that everyone can learn. And what I notice is, um, when students who wouldn't traditionally think they can take an AP class sign up, and I'm going to use, embarrass my daughter Gracie here, um, Gracie was quite learning disabled as a child, a language-based learning disability. Um, and then high school came and her sister dies, so, so her freshman, her sophomore and junior year were really just a bust. Here comes senior year, and she needs to graduate and she's, thinks she's stupid and, and I don't know anything. And so she had to take a, a physics and chemistry, like combo class, and then she took AP Psych. So she did that, you were at the high school then, but, one year, so these are classes she really didn't think she'd do well in. And her little broken brain was perfect, and she aced both of these classes. And so when I look at this, because I was like, I took every English class Concord High School had, I just loved English, I was good at it. I would have loved an AP English class, which is fine for somebody that loves AP English, but I look at this and the analyzing of texts and the conversation around what, you know, what techniques are being used to deliver the message, and I think she would have loved it. So I, I just think, marketing courses like this for kids who don't think, well, I'm not smart enough, oh, but you are. You know, maybe, maybe you can't read out loud well, but boy, do you understand what you stumble through and this will teach, like, I just.
Barb, just to add on to that, just so you folks know too, um, every winter now, prior to when students request classes, we now hold two AP preview days for all students at Concord High School too.
Yes.
So we have them go and visit as many of the different AP classes for a, for a period that they would like to. Um, and it really has increased our AP numbers in a lot of different classes, and students are challenging themselves. So I agree with you, and there, there, sometimes they, students just can't see themselves in those classes and they don't know what it looks like. And so we've been trying to add to that exposure to ensure that students have that access. And even if a class isn't running, we allow for that. So for example, um, AP Chem is on an every-other-year schedule, and it's running this year, but we made sure that that teacher was able to have that in preview days. If you folks approve this, we would make sure that this had an ability to be previewed with the teacher to hear what it's about and what would happen in the class as well. That's really cool.
Sarah?
I am going to ask the sticky wicked question that every board has to ask. Do you need additional FTEs to implement this?
Or, or money for books, because.
Well, it says, I mean, the, the cost of materials doesn't look.
It's very low.
Yeah, it's not terrible, it's more like, are we bringing on another English teacher? How are we using, or, I like those headaches.
We just had this discussion with the math classes.
Not that we would say no if it costs extra dollars, it's just like something that we have to take into account. So how would you plan on implementing this strategically?
Yeah, bu- well, again, it, it's going to come down to course signups and we'll kind of see where the courses fall. We might end up maybe tabling one of our other electives, but we don't anticipate having to increase our staff or anything like that. And the, the cost of books and materials is well within our budget.
Yeah, it's pretty minimal.
Yeah, we just wouldn't want you to have to turn students away without coming back to us if you needed more FTEs.
Right, right.
Do I, do we need to move to bring us to the full board?
Yes, yes, um, so we would, we would do, would we want to do all four?
I think we do them all.
Just do the all four at once?
Do we have any questions?
And forgive me for my tardiness, I'm grateful I was here for this presentation, I'm sorry, everybody.
So, I will move that we bring all four, um, proposed classes, the three for math and the one for, um, language or English, um, to the full board for, um, passage for next year.
Second.
Do we have to do that, or do we, do we usually, I feel like we usually, it has to go to the full board?
We just recommend it to the full board.
Okay, so we, all right.
So that's what we will do then, okay, thank you.
So it's been first and then seconded?
Who seconded it?
I did.
Okay. Brenda, Sarah, um. Is there any other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
I don't count, but aye.
You do count, Barb.
It passes four to nothing.
Yeah.
We will bring that again in October to the full board. Um, it'd be great if one, I don't expect that there'll be a lot of questions, but if there were, if one of you at least would be here for that to help answer those questions, that would be great. Thank you for all that you do for our students, it's great.
Thank you for your hard work over the summer, babes, well done, yeah, proud of you.
All right, and the last thing is the comprehensive literacy framework.
So this is very, very brief, um, I'm just looking for permission to bring it to the full board with a little small presentation. When I first, when I was leaving in two thousand and five to become a principal, the district, um, presented a comprehensive literacy framework that was a binder that was three inches thick that we all had as teachers to follow our literacy protocols, our assessment protocols and all of that. For the last year and a half.
I'm sorry, could you just keep it down for us so I can hear, thank you.
Um, over the last year, um, plus a few months, I've been working with the reading specialists K through five to take that, because it was a lot of really, really good work, but nobody can lug around a three-inch binder anymore and it also wasn't current and relevant.
So I'm just hot off the press, have, wanted to share an example for you, and I'll share these at the full board with the presentation and bring some of the reading specialists forward.
That'd be great.
But I wanted to share a model of a kindergarten, third and fifth grade, so it's paper thin. In the very front of it is a, um, QR code, so everything can be accessed online.
Genius.
So you don't, every single teacher can just like take a picture of that. And we can also use the QR code to, um, do updates to it going forward. And also, it has the new science of reading, we call this the reading rope. So it has the new science and read, science of reading embedded. So it's a fantastic, um, body of work that I would like to have approved by the board and again, do like a five to 10-minute presentation. I'll pass these around, we are going to, we're in the process of printing, but I wanted just to get them in because we're going to be presenting the completed K through twelve vertical alignment of the ELA, English Language Arts curriculum that has just recently been completed. So usually what we typically do is a curriculum acceptance and then a program. We're working on program, but right now, we are, wanted to have something for teachers, especially new teachers, to have in their hands around.
And this was developed by reading specialists?
My, my readings, yeah, my committee, reading specialist committee, myself and them. Um, and it's, some, it's a lot of it is the information that was in that big binder, but it's not taking out like exactly how to do a fountain simple now running record, because that's no longer relevant.
No.
Um, it gives the times of the instructional block, components of an instructional block at each grade, each grade level.
So is cursive back in?
Cursive is required to be, by law, to be taught before grade five.
I know, we taught it in third, we taught it in third grade, but I've just, I, I think at the time I was teaching, it wasn't required at that point.
Yeah, that's, uh, new as of, of twenty-twenty-four legislation.
Yep.
That and like some, like other computer literacy stuff got put back into standard pretty, pretty arbitrarily.
I can see the, five motor is so, that's so helpful for other stuff, forget the cursive.
Do we have any discussion about whether I think that?
No, we definitely bring it.
Yeah, and you, do you need a vote for that, Kim?
Um, it would be great, just to have it.
So go to the full board.
Yeah, bring this, so, um, somebody want to make that?
I'll move to bring the comprehensive literacy framework to the full board, that's presented by.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Yeah, of course.
All those, uh, any discussion?
Um, you're going to be giving us a full presentation on this, so we'll get all of the, the real, like, nitty-gritty stuff at the full board. That works for me.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, passes.
Aye.
All right, great, so that, I believe, was the last thing on our agenda for instructional committee and, um, would take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no, then this meeting is adjourned, and we will meet again in just a moment for another meeting.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, everyone.
I want to call the, the special meeting of the Board of Education to order. Um, Ms. Meeker, will you take the role?
Yes, Ms. Boucher.
Here.
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Hastings.
Here.
Ms. Higgins.
Here.
Mr. Richards is absent. Ms. Robinson.
Here.
Ms. Zdowski.
Here.
Ms. Walsh.
Here.
And I am here, that really threw me off, because your voice usually comes from over there. Uh, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Um, we're meeting tonight to consider putting on the ballot. Um, I don't know if you can put the question up?
Yep, I can do that.
A question to allow us to sell the Eastman School property at fifteen Shamet Street in Concord, in East Concord. And the proposed question that would go on the ballot is before you and on the board. Um, you also have a copy of the charter amendment, sale, gift, or exchange of real property in excess of one acre. And our attorney is available, um, we can go into non-public or public, um, if members of the board have questions that they would like to ask about this, but I'm going to turn it over to, do you have some, anything to go through, Mr. Dunn, or?
Not much you need me to.
Okay, well, then I, I, I think we, um, a few questions that I had asked Mr. Dunn to prepare, um, including, uh, the value of the property, uh, what we receive in rent annually and what we spend in maintenance.
Yep.
And the size of the lot.
Yep, so it's four point six acres. The, um, we budget between fifty and sixty thousand for that building, and we prorate what we charge Boys and Girls Club for the utilities, but we pick up all the life safety, um, water, all that stuff, so about fifty to sixty. Um, it's been good having somebody in there, so it's not a vacant property, and they let, let us know if there's something wrong, um, because these buildings get tough in the winter when they're vacant. So it's been a good partnership so far. Um, I'm trying to think what else.
What we receive. What we receive in rent?
Yeah, so we get 1,600 a month for that. So for 12 months a year.
So significantly less than we spent on maintaining it.
Little bit, but we passed those utilities on, so it's kind of somewhat of a wash, but you do have a building that is going to be needing some work. One expense we did have this year that we took out of contingency was roof repairs. We did not repair the whole roof because that would be a lot more, but we did spend close to $65,000 to repair the roof to that building.
Jack, just for clarification's sake, can you please remind us what exists in that building currently? It's a daycare center, correct?
For, for the Concord Boys and Girls Club.
Okay, so is it directly tied to the district, or it's just Boys and Girls Club using a space?
It depends, just using the space. They give us insurance certificate, and we go over there. They need our help, they have their own swipes to get in.
Okay.
So.
All right.
And the property is assessed at about 2.3?
2 point, according to Vision Appraisals, 2.558 million. That's assessed, not what it would sell for. There's a number of factors that go in, having the experience of sold in Walker School in 2012, 2013, and the Rumford School, where you get into these old buildings, 1937, there's going to be a lot of abatement. We have a lot of those reports, ashtray reports, lead paint reports, all those various things. So that would be something that we would have available if, you know, somebody was interested, but that will devalue the property as we've learned in the past.
What is it, do you know how it is, gosh, I just lost the word I was looking for, zoned for?
I don't. I don't. I probably have it because I did have a title search done to make sure it was clean before you did any action, so I'm sure it's there. I just don't recall what it was off my.
I think it's like mixed use all in that part of the east side.
Are you, is that something you're able to check while we do public hearing?
I could, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
And one other thing I will note as far as the assessed value, typically what has been given to me by the assessor's office is you, you look at the schools too closely because they're not taxable. So, you know, it's their best guess. They probably haven't been in it in quite a while because it's a tax-exempt property. But if we were to move forward, they'll look at that a little closer.
Ms. Campbell and then Ms. Higgins?
Have we had anyone express interest in pushing the building in the last year or so? Or, I don't know if you're able to?
Yeah. No.
Whatever you can share publicly.
Different pieces, whether it's parts of the property or the property.
Okay.
I will say that someone emailed me this week, seeing the article, and said they would be interested, and I said, well, once we have permission, there will be a process, and you can go through that, but.
Perfect.
My question is, I thought at some point the Boys and Girls Club had like, like a right of first refusal or, you know, that's.
No. We don't, no. We, we would do the courtesy of a discussion with them, as we've done over the years in the event.
And if that's what I remember, I think this a long while ago, and they weren't in the place to do it.
Correct.
Pre-COVID, yeah.
And pre-COVID, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
Because Girls in the Room wasn't there for a while, too.
They were in there for a little bit, yes, they were, about a year or two, very early on. So.
Other questions?
Do we have a sign-in sheet?
Yeah, and I was just going to say, for purposes of board discussion and opening it up to the public hearing, I think we should bring a motion forward. Do you want to, do you think we should move, move the question?
Yeah, we can certainly do that. Would anyone like to move the question?
I move that the language as proposed by district council be put on the ballot for, is it no, for the November, for November?
Yep. 2025.
Thank you. Didn't know if the year had to be in there.
Yeah, so you moved to place Eastman School on the November 2025 ballot?
Yes, I did.
As proposed?
As proposed by legal counsel, yes.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Second by Ms. Higgins. Okay, with that, I will open it up for public testimony. If you'd like to speak, please sign in.
I want to speak, sorry.
When you get up, I don't know who's first on the list, so you can come up and speak, and I think Charlie was first, so come on up.
And Pam, when people speak, are they required to say their address or ward number?
I don't think so.
We don't require it.
We have it on the sign-in.
Be helpful.
Yep. If you could please identify yourself.
Charles Russell, Ward 5 in Concord. I'm here to speak to clarify the intent, having been involved in the charter amendment process and the circumstances and the context. I guess upfront, I'd say there's a difference between listing a property, putting it up for sale, and then selling it to a buyer where you know what the price is, and you know what the activity is going to be, and, and all the other terms of it. But anyway, this, this sprung out of the December 2023 meeting over at the CHS auditorium, which I won't go into, but everyone except Dave Parker spoke against moving it across. The board promptly sat down after then and voted to move it to broken ground. Many thought the public hearing was a sham, and it was a done deal, but we won't, we won't beat that horse again. Obviously, the board lost severe trust and faith from the community in doing so, and that caused these two amendments. The second charter amendment, people in the South End primarily asked, well, if Runlet Middle School moves elsewhere, what's going to happen? South End's a mature, well-settled, well-established neighborhood. How will the property be used? How will it change the character? So Ward 7 and the rest of the city voted resoundingly, and I think even more so against the, moving it, the amendment on broken ground by a little higher percentage. But clearly, the people wanted a voice to say how the Concord School District property, and now the East Concord property, if re-used, is sold. Prior to the amendment, the school board could have done what they want, and so why would the people go through the whole charade of putting this language there to say, all I have to do is, mother may I, old people of Concord, can we put this up for sale? Why would they go do that if the interpretation set forward right now is all we have to do, all I have to do is put it on the ballot? So clearly, there's a lot more behind it. So what type of entities, I think people want to know, what type of entities might go into the Runlet Middle Schools site or now Eastman? Who's the buyer behind the curtain? Back then, DHHS for the state was looking for a new facility for the juvenile psychological facility, which we heard talk about nursing homes, medical facilities. Elsewhere, vacant unused buildings end up as shelters for the homeless or things like that. So people wanted to have some right to say what was going on. Maybe, maybe a casino would go there. We're trying to have a casino here, and then, like Nashua, perhaps we'll get a Chinese water company to come in here. But I think the people need to know, and if, if, if the board decides, as is interpreted by this out-of-town council who's not familiar with the whole context and what's going on, then put it on the ballot, and the people are going to say, well, what's going to happen? Where's it going? Who's coming in? And they're going to just vote it down. So if you don't want to share the details for what's going on, you don't want to say it's, it's, who is it going to be sold to is what that, the intent of that question is. So, and, and, you know, you badly miscalculated on the public's view on moving broken, moving it to broken ground. I don't think any of us on either side of this table thought that the vote would be two to one against putting those questions on there. You want to try again a third time, you, you're free to do so. You know, you're educated people, and you should understand these. You're on the education board. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Ms. Poehler?
Oh, no, I didn't want to speak, I'm sorry. I crossed it out.
That's okay. Crystal Breton?
Hi, my name's Crystal Breton, Ward 10. I live right at 2 Kearsard Street, which is the property directly behind the Eastman School. The whole neighborhood is laid out a little funny, but essentially what you need to know, the front side of Eastman School, you can see just the school, but well behind it is a bunch of open, like unused fields, surrounded by woods that run up Mountain Road. My property is a long, skinny property that runs probably like two-thirds of the whole back of the Eastman property, and then there's one more neighbor just beyond me, and he has the rest of it. So there's just two of us who line that back property. We moved there in 2010. We bought that house, and so the school was still a bit active then. We went to the first meetings after it was closed down, and everyone's like, we don't want anything in there besides like, I don't know, it was like senior citizen yoga and all that good stuff. We were proponents of it actually being used for something that would benefit, you know, everybody financially. It got shot down, so I think the last speaker had a point. It's going to get just shot down again if we don't give the residents something to go on besides maybe we have some interested buyers. Just hearing my neighborhood talk, we, we literally inhabit that field. We've got four kids, and they just live there, and we, we are advocates for it to be sold and used. We are, I had, I've contacted the school board a couple times. We, our driveway actually goes out onto the property.
Yeah.
And back onto ours, so technically, we don't even own our whole driveway. So we are looking to kind of figure that out as well. We are cash buyers, we're willing to kind of put some money into this so we can buy our driveway, I guess, because we don't know what's going to go there either. And we, we are, again, we are not against it. We actually are looking forward to it because we know it's costing the district that our kids are in money. Obviously, we get a little bit from Boys and Girls Club, but it's not enough, and we'd love to see it do, be something more than it is and not get just shot down. And so we know a couple people who are truly interested beyond what we are. I mean, we can't afford to buy the whole thing, but part of it would be great, like our driveway, or even a little bit more. We would entertain whatever discussions we could have. But I would, I would be concerned, given everything I saw with the middle school and all that, if, if we don't give these people something to go on. It's going to go the same way it went the first time around, because my neighbors are.
We don't normally do that. No, we don't do that.
Not to her. Not to her, in general.
We can do that after, not during somebody's testimony.
Okay. I think that's all I have, aside from, my driveway's kind of important to me, and additionally, like, I couldn't even put up a fence because it would go across the driveway, and I wouldn't be able to drive up it to, for privacy, you know what I'm saying? Like, depending on what goes in there. So we're just looking to buy like some, so we could put a fence there, depending on what goes in, you know? It's, it's a beautiful thing to look at. It's what I look at through my kitchen window. I love it. Hopefully, something pretty goes there, but if not, a fence might be nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Does anyone else, would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and then Ms. Hastings, you had a question?
So I guess I want to make sure I under, I'm not a real estate broker, I don't know a lot about that stuff, but I want to, I want to see what I do maybe understand, and that is, if a property is sold, and we have to tell people in advance what we are selling and who we're selling it to, and what they're going to use it for, that couldn't happen and be on the ballot for November.
No.
So.
We do not have a secret buyer, by the way, just, I want to be very clear in the attacks on the integrity, there is no.
Yeah.
There is no secret buyer, there's no secret plan, it's an expensive, falling apart building that we don't think taxpayer, I don't think taxpayers, not to speak with the whole board, should be maintaining any longer, but.
So, so there's no way we could get that on the ballot this November? So even if we did have a buyer, which we don't at this time, and they said, yes, we'd like to buy this property, and we're willing to pay you market value for this property, but we have to then go back to them and say, you have to wait till next November? Because we have to go to an election, and it's too expensive to haul, to have a, a single election? Because we've looked at that before. A special election, they're expensive. So that's an, is that my right? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
That is one interpret, that is Mr. Russell's interpretation.
So I'm going to agree with Mr. Russell's interpretation here. It doesn't say the district needs to get a vote to list a, a piece of land or a building. It doesn't say we need permission to bond a building or a piece of land. It says we need a vote, an approval vote to sell it. We're not, the vote on, on, you know, in November, we're not selling it. We're putting it out for bid, we're putting it on the market, we're listing it.
We're getting permission to, we're.
Getting permission to sell it.
Sell it.
Yeah, we actually, we need permission to even list it. What's that? We don't need permission to list it. I interpret it, we would need permission to list it. Well, then, then it would be two votes, because they come up to a buyer. I, I don't see that we can, in good faith, say, permission to sell it is permission to sell it to whoever we want. I, I don't stand by that. That's just me.
Well.
That's not what it says.
Ms. Robinson?
Realistically, that like, in theory, sounds pretty feel-good, but in the way the world works, I don't see it being a productive way for us to actively sell a property. Like, a developer, I know, a developer is going to want to jump on an opportunity, and they're not going to wait six odd months to wait for a city's permission.
Or a year.
To purchase it. So realistically, the language is vague enough that there are two separate interpretations of what this charter amendment means. So our legal counsel has interpreted it in this way, which gives us the ability to ask permission from the, from the taxpayers to sell it, and then if we do have an interested party, we can act on it quickly. That really is the important part of this, is accommodating buyers' needs.
To get as much money.
And to get as much money as we can, you know, not negating the fact that there's also a service there that families depend on right now that could be a real wrench in people's lives. So we have to give, we have to get permission to do what is a very complicated and nuanced song and dance for everybody involved, including the current occupant, that I, that cannot wait for a ballot initiative.
I, so I went back today, and I listened to the public hearing on the charter amendments, and I got AI to do a transcript for me, so it might not be perfect, but there was very little discussion of what these, of charter amendment to, or what it meant, or Mr. Russell's interpretation was certainly not stated. I will tell you that I debated some proponents, Mr. Cooper, of this amendment, and, you know, was repeatedly assured that it didn't mean that we couldn't, that we would have delays in selling property.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I think the business case of it is really hard to get a really, a good deal for taxpayers if you have to tell somebody you have to wait a year. Is, is part of why I would like permissions to sell it, so that we can try and get the best deal for taxpayers and hopefully offset some other costs. My understanding, though, is that it wouldn't negate all other public process.
Right.
That if, you know, we would still have to hold a public hearing as they did and didn't move forward with the Eastman School sale 13 years ago, and that's how, how long we've been holding this property on our, on our books. So, just some additional background. And again, if anyone would like to go into a non-public, we can go, and our attorney is on standby, and you can talk to the attorney directly.
I do think that we should probably have a chat with our attorney, just to affirm some of the things that, that have been discussed here.
Did we find out what the zoning, you just left here?
But I do, I do want to acknowledge that this is a very new process for us. This is the first time that we are interacting with this language. I think it's okay to have discussions, to ask questions, to seek clarification. I don't think that there's any ill intent for us to want to put this on the ballot so that we can honor what the language of the charter amendment says. You know, it's tough. I mean, I, you know, my, my background professionally was in the legislature, and words matter. And, you know, some people may interpret vague language one way or another, and, you know, you can encourage more explicit language to bring clarity, but when we don't have the clarity that we seek, then we seek counsel. We will receive advice from counsel, and we can move forward from there. I, I think it sounds like this is a property that has been potentially one for placing up for sale for some time now, it's just not a conversation that has been renewed until recently. I think we have. not a conversation that has been renewed until recently. I think we have a lot of, uh, fiscal challenges coming up, so adding revenue is a, is a wonderful thing to discuss, um, so that we're not-
And putting that on the tax, making it taxable land, which would be great.
Right, exactly.
And reducing costs.
And reducing costs.
So, I, I just wanna say, I think it's, it's okay, and I think this is a healthy conversation to have, and I look forward to having a, a chat with our counsel, just to reaffirm how, like, how the discussion's going.
Um, so would anyone like to make that motion?
Yeah, I wanna-
No.
The hard part of this board, and please don't take what I'm saying personally, you're all beautiful people, is that, other than Brenda, there's no one sitting at this table that remembers the neighborhood full of Victorians that got secretly bought up to be torn down to Bill McCalliv School. And there's no one on this board, some of the people on this board never even saw Kimball or Connet schools before they were demolished. And that whole project hurt, hurt our community in many ways that none of you know about. So, it's not, it doesn't, people don't come here and say these things out of the blue, and the, the, the hearing, um, with putting the middle school at broken ground, you know, I, I, I look at that as a dark day for our board, and what that hearing caused is this, now, now we have to dicker about what exactly do these charter amendments mean. This is my fourteenth year on the board, and in all of the years I've been on the board, no matter how much the public didn't like us, somehow we managed to remain autonomous. And so, I'm fr, my frustration comes at trying to dicker with words over charter amendments that we shouldn't even have. And, and maybe that makes me an odd person out on this board, but I, I just, I just feel that what the, what the community wants is input on what goes on that piece of land. What does she look out her kitchen window at? What do the kids see when they go out and play in their yards? What happens to traffic? All of those things. Um, so I feel, I just, I just wanna acknowledge that I feel uncomfortable around this as well, and I know the history that goes into it, um, and how an autonomous board, while oftentimes good for taxpayers' bottom line, can be, can be very, very bad for trust and open dialogue and communication, because it's easy for agendas to take place. So, I'm just sharing my feelings on that, um, 'cause I, I, you know, we're a board of nine people, and we have to work together, but I'm, I'm uncomfortable with all of this right now, and I just want you all to know that.
So, I move that we go into non-public to have a discussion with legal counsel, to affirm that our interpretation of the charter amendments is accurate, and that moving forward with the motion on the table, or, I mean, the motion being debated, is accurate.
That would be under ninety-one A three-two.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any discussion?
I'm not trying to be argumentative, but why does it have to be non-public?
We're conferring with legal counsel.
That's just what I need.
Yeah, anytime we do it by law.
So, are we gonna go in there and do it?
We'll go into the jury room.
Yeah, that's fine.
Um-
Yeah, you guys can stay, we'll be very few minutes.
We'll be right back.
Yeah.
Um, this is a roll call vote?
Yep. Ms. Boucher?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hastings?
Yep.
Ms. Higgins?
Yep.
Uh, Ms. Robinson?
Yep.
Ms. Sadowski?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We are in non-public.
We are non-public for a few minutes.
We'll be right back. I named my mother.
I'll motion to come out of non-public.
Move by Ms. Sedowski.
Second?
Second by Ms. Robinson is their discussion. Ms. Meeker, will you take the roll?
Ms. Boucher.
Here.
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Hastings.
The answer is yes or no.
Yes.
Here. Oh, and here.
Just yeses, right? Ms. Higgins.
Yep.
Ms. Robinson.
Yeah.
Ms. Sedowski.
Yes.
Ms. Walsh.
Yes.
I am a yes. We are out of non-public.
Do we need to move to seal the moment?
Yes.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move that we seal the moments over non-public.
Minutes.
Minutes, minutes, moments, not...
After the public hearing, would anyone like to make a motion to allow them, these two individuals to...
Yeah.
Move by Ms. Hastings. Is there a second?
Seconded.
By Ms. Sedowski. If you could keep your comments under three minutes, please. Suzanne Smith-Meyer?
Yes.
We're gonna all in favor.
We're gonna... Oh, sorry. Thank you.
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
You'd like to speak? Please speak into the microphone and state your name.
Suzanne Smith-Meyer. I live at 14 Shawmett Street, which is right across from Eastman. My four children went there and I'm very active in the school. It was kind of a community center as well as a school. So I have some concerns that I would think that maybe the school board could embrace before they sell it, like the commitment to preserving the building because of its historic nature and the character it brings to the neighborhood. One of the things I think everybody doesn't want to happen is for the character of the neighborhood to change. I did go to the meeting, I don't know, was it 10 years, when they had the consultants come in at Eastman School? And I have to say that I was very disappointed with his ideas, one of them being a nursing home, which he then said to me, "Well, it's not unlike the school." And I'm like, "Well, actually, it's not open 24/7. It's not open for 365 days a year. It doesn't have ambulances coming to visit it unless there's an emergency." So that would have been a very invasive, intrusive use. I know that the zoning is RN, and so I don't even, that would have been spot zoning if they allowed that to happen. As in like a medical facility. So I would encourage the board to kind of think about how the development and the selling of it would affect the neighborhood. I know that the East Concord Community Center, which was the old fire station, the people who bought it were not allowed to change that. They weren't allowed to, as far as I know, to tear it down. The other thing is very personal to me. There's a sugar maple on the property, and I think, I'm thinking that my son, who's now 35, was probably in third grade at Broken Ground, and I went over with this group. I don't know if it was a bicentennial or a 200-year, 2000... We planted 200 to 2,000 trees all over the city, and Eastman has one of them. And it's now a mature, it's gotta be 25 years. It's a mature sugar maple. So when I walk by it twice a day, when I was walking my dog, and it is flourishing, and I would have to tie myself to that tree before anyone took it down. And so like, those are the things that I think for me are very important. And that was an important part of the tree group, planting trees all over the community. And there's all this other stuff, but I think for the school board, as they're going forward, is to think about how whatever happens fits into the neighborhood before... Because it's kind of hard to envision, like, how is this going to change, this meeting going to change, when actually someone wants to buy it? I was on the planning board for over 15 years, and I know that a lot of things have to go to the planning board, and there's a lot of discussion, but it's just like a wonderful piece of the, of East Concord, the village of East Concord, so that's where I'm thinking. Thank you for letting me speak. I so appreciate it.
Roy, why don't...
Oh, he doesn't have the... Well, you're signed in, so...
If you want to save your minutes, you can. All right. I am gonna reclose the public hearing. Thank you. I thought it was somebody else. I appreciate, and I appreciate your comments. And you know, one of the things that I understand that was done when Walker was sold and Rumford was sold, it was that there were community advisory groups around the reuse of these buildings. And I think if this motion passes, I would make a motion that we set up an advisory group that would advise the district on buyer, on evaluating proposals.
That was on the Walker.
So, you know, but that's if we move forward with this.
Well, along the same lines, Pam, is that if we put this to a vote now of our intent to list it, that allows us to have those committees, to have those discussions before we have a buyer come to us. If we just came with a buyer, not only are we wasting money, because that buyer would then have to wait for us to put it on the ballot, but it may not be a buyer that people are interested in. This is all helpful feedback. I really appreciate the comments about the property around it, what's meaningful to you. Those are all things that, you know, I certainly can empathize with as if I were to own that property. And so those are the types of things that I want to hear and how we could be thoughtful in that process going forward. But we need to put this on the ballot to list it so that we can have further discussions about who that buyer could be.
Other discussions?
I just wanna co-sign what she just said.
Right.
Sign that.
Oh, sorry. I do, I do wanna say that, like, for me, this feels like a beginning. Like, it feels like a starting line for starting, for getting a process going that has enough time to engage with people on the ballot, engage with our community about what, what it's gonna look like if they say yes versus if they say no. You know, I know it feel, it may feel like, oh, my gosh, like, the board's getting together to sell Eastman. Like, there's, there's so much time and there's so much opportunity for dialogue on this that I feel like we're just getting started.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah, Ms. Campbell.
Yeah. Can, Jack, can you just refresh me again about the right of refusal provision? And like, who, if we were to list this and sell it, who gets first dibs as well?
The only thing we're obligated to, which is in your statute that attorney advised us, is if it were to become a charter school.
So that's...
They have the right under state law to be able to purchase that.
Okay.
So that's why that covers that. If there's nobody, then, you know, we take the next steps. So we'll have to dig deeper into how long that is, how long that offer needs to be, that kind of thing.
And then follow-up to that would be, if that were the case, would we still be able to put any type of stipulations, as in like the driveway, right, or the tree? Like, it would be nice.
So when we...
Feel you with the driveway.
Yeah, driveway's a real problem, honey.
So, again, I think the process different for the middle school versus this is that you're gonna have both government, governmental bodies involved. You're gonna have, as Ms. Meyer said, the planning board involved.
Can you explain to me like I'm five? Yeah.
Yeah. So you're gonna have the planning board involved. There'll be public hearings, and there can be things that are put in the deeds. We did put restrictions in the deeds. For example, Walker School has a deed restriction that that building couldn't be torn down, and it was gonna go on the historical. Fortunately for us, we got a good buyer who did all that and actually put it on the registry, not because it was X amount of years old that it was on the registry. So they did a great job with that, similar to the Rumford School. We went through that process. But public hearings, feedback, and input, and again, the city planning board and city will have that. And I did talk with the finance office to find out what other provision that they... One of the other things we put in those leases, or those, I'm sorry, those deeds, was that even if they're tax exempt, they pay property taxes, because there's so many tax exempt properties. But we tried to listen to everybody and try to get in there. Now, obviously, all those restrictions add up to a reduced amount, but it's the balance of the community input and what the community wants to the dollars.
Can I ask one more? I'm sorry. And again, just explain to me like I'm five, because I pretty much am. So let's say we pass this tonight. We list it. Six months, we have a buyer. And that buyer, whoever the buyer is, I'm assuming private, if it's a private buyer, like they wanna buy a McMansion, I don't think that's gonna happen, right? That's probably easy. They buy it, they give us some money, et cetera. More than likely, it's going to be, I'm guessing, right, it's residential, so residential buildings, plural. When that happens, they have to go through the city for zoning approvals before they buy it?
Yeah, likely once you got all your input and there was a, likely typical when you would buy a home, maybe a little bit different with this, if there was a purchase and sale agreement in place, similar to what we did with Clinton, there'll be a list of things that are gonna be out, so it has to have a clean title. And they have to plan, they may have to pass their, the planning board. They may have all these conditions, because the buyer's not gonna wanna be obligated to buy a property that maybe don't meet zoning or proper planning.
Got it.
So it's a lot more involved process.
So I can't just go sell this to some company, sole deal.
And then we'd have to do a public hearing as well.
And that's, yeah, without... That makes me feel a lot better. Okay.
There's a lot of levers and switches.
Other questions or discussions?
Did we wanna explain the advice that we received from our attorneys, or...
Other than, I think, what we said earlier, which is that our attorney believed that this was an appropriate action.
I mean, one disappeared for 20 minutes and came out, it would be nice for them to know what we talked about.
Ms. Meeker, could you roll, please? Unless there's...
You're calling the question, so...
I'm calling the question.
This is the motion, just to refresh everyone's memory, Karen, could you remind us what the motion is?
Absolutely. The motion on the table is to place the Eastman School on the November 2025 ballot with the language as proposed by council. That's it. Dot, dot, dot. Do we wanna, are we gonna roll, roll call vote?
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Boucher?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hastings?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Sedowski?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that the board establish an advisory committee on the sale of the Eastman School property with members to be appointed by the president of the board.
Second.
Can I add a friendly...
Yep.
Yeah, can I add a...
Don't we discuss now?
Yeah, yeah, you can discuss, yeah.
So can we be sure that we connect with the people within that neighborhood immediately first? So that they have more of a control of the situation?
Yeah, I think we set up applications, as we did for some of the advisory committees around the middle school. We'll, we'll set up an application process. I'm not just gonna call five people right now.
Yeah, you're not gonna call all the general managers. But if they're interested, and I feel like we have some real leadership in the neighborhood too, so we could probably get some good representation.
I'm so sorry, this is, it, can we act sooner on the driveway? Like, I'm assuming, I hate talking about you like you're not here, but I have to. Is that something you just reached out?
I think you'll get advice from council, inside whether you wanna have a realtor involved. How much of this do you wanna, you know?
But I think we need to get the permission first.
That's fair. Yeah, so we need to get...
Because you could have, you could have multiple buyers, if you're parsing property and selling a physical building. But then I don't know what the requirements would be. Say, for example, a commercial buys it, but yet they need so many parking spots, now selling that property might mean that they don't have the spot. So that, there's a lot of different things involved in this.
So we gotta list it, we start the conversation, we have to advise...
We have to get permission to sell it.
Permission first.
Thank you.
And then lay out a roadmap.
But we can start conversations earlier.
So just a little historical story. So I was involved in the sale of Walker School, and there were two very interested buyers, Benny Media, who bought the building, and Concord Group Insurance Company, whose now empty green office building was across the street. And they had all these houses on South, South Street heading toward Boe, and they wanted to consolidate. And the offers came in and sort of local support was for Concord Group. It's a local company. It's people that have grown up here and worked here forever. But Benny Media was quite flashy and had the money to offer a much higher price. And so they put it to auction. So there was an auction, back and forth, back and forth. And so we, we went there, and Concord Group knew that they would not be able to afford, they would not be able to outbid Benny Media. And so the person they sent bid a really high number, so Benny had to come back and bid higher to buy it. And she said, "We can't afford the building, but at least we can get the taxpayers good money for it." So that was just, that was, that was a, that was a, up in the auditorium there of Walker School all those years ago. So that's just some context to things that citizens here have already gone through in the sale and repurposing of buildings.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I am going to ask for a non-public session...
Sorry. I'm like, I'm out of paper.
On, under 91A, 32C personnel. If, I do not anticipate coming back after that, per people's thinks, but is there a second?
Second.
Move by me, second by Ms. Robinson. This is a roll call vote. We'll let Ms. Meeker catch up.
Ms. Boucher?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hastings?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yep.
Ms. Robinson?
Yep.
Ms. Sedowski?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Great. Thank you. I do not anticipate us coming back except to adjourn. So thank you all for coming this evening. Let us know if you're interested. In signing or purchasing, right?